Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. First order of business is to call the board.
Bruce Forrester?
Here.
Craig Burrow?
Here.
Luke Phelan?
Here.
Tim Crawford?
Here.
Second thing is to approve the minutes and the transcripts from the 11-7-2024 meeting, hearing on petition number, uh, numbers 24-P-1630, 1631, and 1633. And we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next thing on the agenda is a motion to adjourn pursuant to the county board's vote on petitions number, uh, 24P-1629 Humphrey. Special use permit, inventory, material storage, outdoors. Second one is 24-P-1631 SI. Special use permit for an amusement park. And the third one is 24-P-1633 Winstead for a map amendment. Can I have a motion to adjourn that meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Was, uh, all three of those approved then by the county board?
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move on to old business. Petition number 24-P-1632 by Jeffrey A. Lewis as owner of PIN number 0702-17-252-015, commonly known as 763 Forest Park Drive, Dixon and Dixon Township, Lee County, Illinois, which is zoned R2, single-family residential district, filed a petition for a variance with the Lee County zoning office requesting it be granted a variance from Title 10, Chapter 9, Section 3, Bulk Regulations, specifically side rear yard setback for the purpose of adding on to an existing accessory building. The parcel is approximately .92 acres in size.
I have been in, uh, I've been in touch with Mr. Lewis. Um, he previously had requested a continuance based on, um, an issue involving the neighbor that he was hoping to resolve prior to hearing. It is my understanding that it has been resolved. However, he had a medical appointment tonight or this afternoon. He was not going to be able to make it tonight. He is requesting that the board continue this to February, um, so that he can be present for the hearing.
Okay. So, we need a motion for a continuance.
I move we continue.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to continue the petition to the February meeting. We have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, petition number 24-P-1634 by Georgios, and I can't pronounce his last name.
Corunzos?
Okay. Owner of 823 Sterling Road Dixon in Marion Township, Lee County, Illinois filed a petition for a special use permit. A petition with the Lee County zoning office requesting that he be granted a special use for the property which is zoned Egg One Rural Agricultural District to allow for the operation of his auto repair business under the auto repair minor use classification as set forth in the Lee County Code. The parcel is approximately five acres in size. Is the petitioner present?
Do you want her, you, would you like them to come up and sit at the table or present from the back?
Which way do you want to do it? Do we have?
Our stenographer would prefer you come up.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're good.
So, Mr. Chairman, there may be a little bit of a language barrier here. So I have a proposal as how to move forward to tonight. So if it's agreeable, I could be sworn in and then I could present on his behalf. And if we have questions, he can answer, but sometime we might have to utilize Google Translate to get the answer.
Okay. Why don't I swear you both in at the same time?
Sounds like plan to me.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Sign your name and then.
Just a little bit of background on this property. My office has been working with George since about April of 2024. As there has been some compliance issues at his property involving some inoperable vehicles and, and whatnot. During that time, it, we've learned that George is currently operating a business out of that location. We would like, he is here tonight to request to bring the property into compliance by asking for a special use for what he is doing currently at the property.
Okay. Yeah, now you have to state your name.
Yes, my name's Courtney Kennedy. I'm an attorney here on behalf of Mr. Corunzos, the petitioner. As stated, he is requesting a special use permit for his property, 823 Sterling Road in Dixon, Lee County. He has resided there since September 23rd of 2011 and has worked full-time as an auto mechanic from this property since that date. I would say about 90% of the time, he works from this site. Unless he's called to a job site, then he has a vehicle that he goes and takes on farm calls to fix farm machinery. He does not have any employees. He works seven days a week as needed. Many, you know, has different clients ranging, like I said, from farmers, individuals, townships. He does a lot of township work. As far as lithium batteries, I know that might be a concern for this board to consider. He does not store them at the property. As I understand it, he does a core charge. So if he has a bad battery from a vehicle, he will take it in to get the credit, gets a new battery. So there's no storage of batteries at this property. As far as liquids or what we may consider hazardous materials, any used oil he stores in a 250-gallon plastic tote that gets removed off-site. Same for antifreeze. So there's nothing that he's, you know, thrown away on the ground or anything like that. No EMF frequency is associated with his line of work. He does have a yard light that he utilizes, but no planned lighting to be installed on the property and no signage at this time. With the type of work he does, no vibrations expected or anticipated, and the same with glare and heat. As Alice mentioned, we have been working in conjunction with the zoning office. And so we've come up with a list of conditions that we, or Mr. Corunzos, as the petitioner, would voluntarily agree to with respect to his request for a special use permit. The first condition would be that the petitioner shall be limited to working on 15 vehicles at one time. Condition number two would be no vehicles shall be parked or stored in the public right-of-way. Condition number three, no signs shall be placed on the property unless such signage is approved to the Lee County zoning office. The condition number four, excuse me, the petitioner shall not operate a junkyard or scrap processing facility as those terms are defined by the Lee County Code from this subject property. And then lastly, the petitioner shall comply with, among other things, the hazardous materials section of the Lee County Code.
Good.
I'm gonna have Jonathan pull up a map of the property. And if you can screen, share it to, thank you. Okay, this is, what you're looking at right now is a picture of George's property. As you can see, there are a number of junk vehicles currently on the property. My office is working with him on that issue. It is separate from tonight. Tonight, you guys are here only about the, uh, you, the automobile repair minor usage at the property. So you just want to make that clear that we are addressing the, the rest of the property in addition to what we're doing tonight.
Okay. And I'm assuming the two separate buildings from the house are where he's doing his car repairs?
That is correct.
Okay.
You live on site?
He does, yes.
What's the long buildings? Are those trailers or?
These are all trailers. And this is the building that.
Who's the neighbors?
The bonds is on this side. I'm not sure.
The wrong one's a land.
Levan?
Yes, I have, in my search for adjacent landowners for purposes of sending out the notice of public hearing, I have Joseph and Muriel Lorenz, James Bonds, and then the Kenneth Family Limited Partnership.
And they've been all notified?
Correct. I have supplied the, a copy of the notice of public hearing that went out to all adjacent landowners and the certified mailings proof of that. I've been tendered to Alice as well as a certificate of publication for tonight's hearing.
Okay.
What's the roughly three acres that's vacant on the? Oh, west side is it?
He has several, um, farm animals at the property that are free range.
So you say 15, is it approximately 15 cars and vehicles are on there right now? Don't pretend I'm gonna look the same.
I believe so, yes.
Jared Yater, who is a compliance officer with the zoning office, he is going to be meeting with George to do an inventory of what is on the property so we can determine, um, what he is using, what is being worked on, and what is inoperable.
Does Mr., or does he have a tow truck or a car hauler or anything?
Yes, my other question is as as she gave us a, uh, Courtney gave us a listing of what their proposals were. Did she work with you with those proposals?
Yes.
So you agree with those?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we under, we recognize that it's ultimately up to the zoning board of appeals.
No, I understand.
Okay, given, we're, we're just trying to.
Come to an agreement somewhere.
Yes, and, and to help him with the language issue that we have, so.
Correct.
We wanted to make sure he understood everything and, and could make that work.
Okay. All right.
What's the, Alice, what's the, uh, a few years ago, we talked about trying to clean up the county vehicles. What's the number that's allowed when on normal places?
It's not really a number. It's about how many days it, it remains in the same spot, whether it's operable or inoperable. So that is what Jared Yater has been working with him regarding, um, as well as some of the, the debris. I spoke with Jared today. He said he has already made significant process in cleaning up one area of the property. We recognize that he is doing this on his own, um, that he doesn't have assistance. And as long as he keeps making progress, we, my office doesn't have an issue with that.
And have the neighbors made any comments about this at all?
Your neighbors talk to you about your business, though?
No, yes, people come in.
No.
Right.
Because if they did, they'd be here.
What's that?
Because if they did, they'd be here.
Yeah, probably. So.
My office did not receive any phone calls regarding this petition prior to today.
Do we have any more questions?
I have none.
That's it?
I have none.
You have none? You have any questions or comments? Nope. And the next is?
Reed, do you have any questions or comments for this witness?
No, I really don't. I was just, you know, as long as there's a kind of some, some showings of, uh, progress made or, or an agreement that he will make progress, I think, uh, it would be doable.
Okay. All right.
I, I do have one question before you proceed. Were you able to identify an area of the property where he will store the vehicles on which he's working?
I believe somewhere west of his driveway.
Okay.
I think it's difficult because sometimes they get dropped off there. They're inoperable, so he's somewhat limited. He can't move them until he can work on them, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Are we going to rezone the whole five acres or a special use or just part of it?
It, it's not a rezoning. It's just a special use. The zoning will stay egg and the special use would apply to the whole property.
Mike's not here. I gotta ask.
You're gonna ask me what the PI is too?
So. Will we move on to findings of fact?
That would be the next step if you guys are, you can dismiss, um, the witnesses and proceed with.
Unless they'd like to sit here and watch us.
I mean, they're more than welcome to.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. You get to read what the first
Uh huh.
category is.
The effect of the proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood.
I would say I can't make any motions, so, but I would say it technically does not have any effect because he's been doing this since 2011.
I would agree.
If anything, it's an improvement.
Yeah.
No effect, all right.
Oh, well, we could note that it would have maybe the possibility of, uh, improvement on the character of the property.
Because of cleaning up?
Yes.
Right. So would you like to make a motion on?
I would like to make that in the form of a motion, uh, that the zoning board of appeals finds that this could uh, improve the character of the property.
Not change it in any bad ways.
Yeah.
No effect. All right.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Or do we have a second?
Second.
Craig seconded it. We have any comments?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else on changing the character of the neighborhood? Okay.
All right, the effect of the proposed use upon traffic conditions.
Once again, I would say
None.
None. We have a motion to that.
I move it.
You think what?
I move that we put down there is no change in traffic conditions.
No effect.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The effect of proposed use upon public utility facilities.
No change.
I move the zoning board of appeals finds no change.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The effect of the proposed use upon public health, public safety, and/or general welfare.
Probably cleaning up some of it has a positive effect.
Someone want to put that in the form of a motion?
What's that?
Trying to think of a term while they're cleaning up property.
Cleaning and organizing.
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 Right. Is that, are you making a motion?
I know that we, that we, uh, put down that the proposed use would have the effect of organizing the business.
Yeah. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The effects of proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
What's that?
I think it would be positive.
Okay, make a motion to that.
Make a motion that the effects would, uh, make a positive improvement, especially by organizing the vehicles on the property.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. That it would be a positive effect on the neighborhood for the organization organizing the property.
Correct.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The effects of the proposal, proposed use upon environmental concerns. Not changing nothing.
If all current regulations.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll put that in the form. As long as.
He's, because he's currently storing his used oil when antifreeze and follows regulations of.
How do you want to say that, Craig? Is all, as long as all the current?
Regulations.
So are we going with no effect, uh, on environmental concerns so long as current standards are upheld?
Correct.
And what you might want to do is just reference the performance standards that would apply. And that's, you know, the toxic and noxious materials or hazardous waste. Additionally, um, with his animals being free range, he has to be very careful with where he keeps his.
Right.
Okay.
So who wants to?
Put in the form of a motion that, uh, there should be no change so long as all the current standards are upheld?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that one? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Recommendations to the full board, I would say something that they, the recommendations that were presented to the zoning board by the petitioner.
Are you talking about the conditions or the recommendations?
Recommendations.
The recommendation would be to approve or to deny? Or are you talking about the conditions that she proposed about limiting the vehicles?
We, we, we vote to approve or deny.
First.
And then in discussion, we can add conditions.
Right.
So I move that we approve the special use permit for this petition.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Now we need, we need to put in the conditions.
What's that?
So, we write in the conditions.
Just wait, wait a minute. I gotta figure this out. When is the next county board, when is the next county board meeting?
County board will meet January 23rd.
January 23rd. Is that a day meeting, night meeting?
Yes.
Guess what? Day or night?
Evening, 6:00 PM.
It's PM, okay.
Yes. Did I, I'm, did I miss the conditions?
No.
Oh, okay, just making sure. What you may want to do is just make a motion, um, to accept the proposed conditions, um, presented by the petitioner.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, proposed conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Let me just attach it. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to accept the proposed conditions provided by the petitioner. And is there any discussion there? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Done here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
You can hold that for that?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next petition, new petition. Petition number 24-P dash 1635 by Jake Castner of 905 Stony Point Road. Dixon, Illinois, is owner of pin numbers 07 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 17 07 dash 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 35 dash 07 dash 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 018 and 07 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 022 in Dixon Township, Lee County, Illinois, which is zoned R2 family residential district. Piled a petition for a map amendment with the Lee County Zoning Office to amend the zoning map from R2 single-family residential district to Ag 1 rural agricultural district for the purpose of raising and keeping farm animals, more specifically chickens, on pin number 07 dash 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 022, commonly known as 905 Stony Point Road, Dixon, Illinois, and B for forestry conservation on the other three parcels, 07 02 dash 34 dash 300 dash 017 07 dash 02 dash 34 dash 03 0300 035 and 07 02 34 300 018. The parcels totally together are approximately 52.16 acres in size.
Need a break?
Lot of numbers there.
Okay, so Mr. Castner is not here this evening. As these four parcels are located within the mile and a half of the city of Dixon, he is, his petition is gonna have to go before the city planning commission prior to coming to you guys. So it would be my suggestion to continue to the February 6th meeting of the ZBA.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
The forestry conservation part, do we have to do with anything with that or is that just?
So currently, all four parcels are zoned residential. Forestry conservation is in agricultural use, according to state statute. He is simply trying to align the zoning with the use for compliance in Lee County. Full transparency, this petition has raised some concerns with the city because they saw chickens. And they thought this was gonna be a 50-acre livestock operation. That is not the intent. And Mr. Castner will be here to provide the evidence that as part of this forestry conservation that he cannot have any livestock on that property, on those properties. So we will get into that next month. We're hoping to address the city's concerns later this month.
So you would like us to?
Please continue to the February 6th meeting of the ZBA.
Okay, so can we have a motion to continue?
I move that we continue petition number 24P dash 1635 to the February meeting.
I'll second it.
And part of the purpose of that is to send it to the city first so that they can make a recommendation to us. Okay, we have a motion to continue. We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next thing we need is a motion to recess to the next regular scheduled meeting for the zoning board of appeals will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 6th, 2025.
I move to recess until the February meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. I'm sure there's no discussion on this. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Are we adjourned? We're recessed.
We're recessed.